We have Pastor Tom Price here from Gospel, approximately about the hammer and a church. Mike, would you give us a word of prayer?
Silence please.
On frustration, anger, hate, and give us, give us a blessing of guidance, guidance and patience.
Silence. Father, I'm truly honored this evening to be in this place where prayer is wanted to be made and invited, especially prayer in the name of your son, Jesus. But I'm humbled to be able to enter into the throne room of heaven by that name. Living today, Lord, when people say there's no need to pray, we find when your son walked among us and he prayed often, even prayed the night through, like the mayor just said, that we need to pray about many things in this day and hour that we live. Our nation, Lord, in many ways is a war with itself, divided. We just pray, God, that you would intervene as only you can. You've given us free will, and it's not always the best for us, although we're thankful for it. We do pray, God, that you would, some way that only you, a gracious and an almighty God, can, to reach in and touch hearts, change attitudes and lives. And I pray that you would protect those, Lord, that are trying to provide protection in these cities and these towns against the incursions, Lord, not just the protesters, but arriveders and those that would do harm because of what's in their heart. We pray for them too, God. You know our hearts, you know how fall we feel, our wrong sinners that need to be saved by grace. Thank you for these that are here in Dunbar, Lord, that serve. I pray that you bless the mayor and council, give them wisdom that they don't have to conduct the business that's the best for this place, provide us with safety, grace, and all the things the mayor asks us to pray for. We'll give you the praise, Lord, or all, because we ask you that that name that's above every name, the name of our son, Jesus.
Do you hear me? Do you hear us in the public?
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The court clerk will have the vote called, please.
Steve Arndt.
Here.
Mike Skipio.
Here.
Doug Fleschman.
Here.
Trey Hudson.
Here.
Greg Wolf.
Here.
Bonnie Thompson.
Present.
Jim Hughes.
Here.
Lynn the Baller.
I'm here.
Coram being present, I declare the June 1st, 2020 meeting of Dunbar City Council in order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the May 18th, 2020 council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the council meeting, May 18th, 2020, as written.
Second. There's been a motion by Councilman Fleschman to approve the minutes of the May 18th, 2020 council meeting, as written, seconded by Councilman Wolf. Any comments, clarifications? Being done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, none, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is, it's under presentation, recognition, we'll have an announcement from Councilman Skipio and Councilman Arndt.
Mayor, I'd like to share with the rest of the council and anyone that might be looking in on us that the Gross Cup Avenue sidewalk project at 90,000, West Virginia Department Transportation Off Trucking Grant Program project. We've been seeking money for years on the sidewalk improvement projects. We've done the streetscape of 10th Street and Dunbar Avenue. Dunbar Avenue, we've got 10th Street and Dunbar Avenue paid. The final phase of Dunbar Avenue project, 14th and 16th Street, will begin once we get the Eastwood signed. The Gross Cup Avenue projects, one of three, have been submitted for funding with the assistance of the Regional Intergovernment Council, with those known as RIC. It stretches from 10th Street to 16th Street on both sides and addresses, and addresses ADA curb cuts and replacement of bad section sidewalks. The other two projects are, one, the ADA curb cuts and sidewalk replacement on the south side of Myers Avenue, and a short section of Ohio Avenue in the west side of 15th Street, replacement of the walking track loop road at Dunbar City Park. We're going to continue to seek funds for these two projects. I'd also like to recognize several of our representatives that have worked to help us get this grant, and they would include Senator Glenn Jeffries, Senator Richard Lindsay, Delegate Eric Nelson, Delegate Moore Capito, Delegate Doug Scam, Delegate Andrew Byrd. This, of course, being in more than one, Mike and our vote, that gets happening, and I think Mike has government office here.
This is a project that I've been working on for years, it's just been happening overnight. I mean, I remember about 10 years ago, we started working on talking about this, and I couldn't listen until about three years ago, the mayor took a little bit of a horn and really got it going. This is almost a surprise, I think, to most of us, because we haven't worked so hard in this law. But it will consist of 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th Streets and Gross Cup Avenues. The reason this particular part of town was chosen, because of the age of the town, of course, it's a young part of town, sidewalk condition, at the same time, we have a lot of foot traffic around here, a lot of businesses are involved in this, so this will accommodate people walking into businesses, just out for a walk, pushing babies and baby carrying down the sidewalk, that maybe they'll be out on the street, and then go down the sidewalk. But the point is, it's been a long hard battle, we still have two more phases to work on, and we're really appreciative of what we've done.
Anybody else have anything to add?
I just thank everyone that has been involved with this. All this time, they haven't given up, and they've pushed and shoved until they got somebody to back them, especially you, Mayor. You've really got active in this in the last two or three years.
I think one of the other meetings we had not too long ago, there was a question about what the Regent of Intergovernmental Council does for us, but this is actually what they do. They assist cities throughout their councils, regents, and county commissions, and so forth, preparing applications for funding for special projects, and then they help the ministry. So that annual dues that we pay is really $8,000, $2,000. So it saves a lot of expense over what we have been paying for past grants administration riders and so forth like that. So I think it's wise and prudent expenditure, proper utilization of this organization, officials in the city, per year.
Just got used to it. I used it when I worked for Toronto, they helped me with that.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Councilman Fleschman said. I can remember coming to the council meeting years ago, and you, Councilman Skipio, talking about that. So I appreciate your persistence, and the mayor for taking the bull by the horns, and Councilman Arndt. I can remember you guys talking about that years ago, so I appreciate it.
I think one person indeed some of the credit, I think Councilman Skipio will hold it up. Now, in San Francisco, we have an Autocat program, maps, not here, maybe we have it blocked out. But anyway, we have an Autocat program that we can use to do design. We have used that on several different projects in the city of safety and monitoring. Well, he did all the detail and showing each intersection, sort of pictures of it incorporated into a drawing along with DOA criteria for the sidewalk crossings, and took the mapping that we have in-house, plotted out, the sections of sidewalk committee to replace. There again, it's a whole lot of work that's done in-house, utilizing our own expertise or our talents to make this whole thing possible. Okay, let's get to the movement state now, going into the details.
Get the winner. Invoices submitted for payment. Mr. Chairman, we're through these. Again, each of you should have your list, and it's only $33,755.60 for this period. Again, we've been trying to be very careful during these times, and if you look through it, it's mostly, for example, our usual bond pay, bond renewals for officers, utilities for coffee machines, water, those type of things. Also included in that $33,000 is the $10,000 that will come to later, which is our copays for five legal suits we're in, so that's included. We'll come to that as a single item later, but it's included in this total $33,000. So it's a pretty simple routine, but if you want to build grounds, if you ask the person any questions, we'll start over here with the number one, with Councilman Arndt. Any questions on these invoices?
Yeah, I will pay the reference.
Councilman Skipio?
Yeah.
Our orders changed, it's kind of confusing. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions, Lynn? Again, these are very routine and very limited, so we are thankful for that. So for invoices, this period is $33,755.60, maybe invoices.
Say. There's been a motion by Councilman Hudson to approve invoices for payment in the amount of $33,755.60, seconded by Councilman Fleschman. Any further questions, comments? Being done, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, no, abstentions, none, motion carries. I guess the next item is, we'll get into the finances, and we'll kind of combine them. We'll go with clerk summary, and then we'll get into the rural businesses, finance committee, and see if we'll kind of find everything too. So clerk will do her report, and then the county committee.
I did hand out a couple of things this evening, the first, so hard to give all the other reports, but I love to give. But I have a question, with the bank account of the CD that about 5:00, I printed, and then I gave what's in our accounts, up at our IFAST account, and our farm loans, and our two kind of rainy day funds. So that call up to date, that was at the end of May, that I gave you the CD in the bank account. Next council meeting, we'll should have everything ready for the end of the month.
Mr. Chairman, nice question. It's not exactly about these, but it is about year-end products getting ready. We're starting June. How are we looking with vacation? Because we have the option of, one, we buyouts, and we didn't allow vacation in April, and the park strike is the governor's orders. Now we're getting here again. How's it looking? Are we going to allow some vacations so we don't have as many buyouts in the year? Have a lot of buyouts waiting to be understood.
The, once the governor lists his restrictions of vacation to go back to form, which the way things are going, that's probably going to happen in the next few weeks. Now, I also have it until January.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
No, not the basic calendar.
Yeah, a year.
They get their, they're awarded their vacation on January 1st, every year, so they don't go have six months to get their, whatever vacation they have, use before the, before the buyout. I guess we could revisit some restrictions to keep people from getting their full utilization or retention extended.
I was just thinking about this weird thing we've been raising a lot once, to figure we had timelines.
That's my fault.
That's my fault.
That's okay.
Okay, so you're ready to, are you coming this far?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so y'all want to go into the normal finance committee, questions, finance.
Okay.
Yeah. You want us to do, rest, will we start on the budget adjustment that we need to do?
Well, kind of back to the finances for a second. As it stands right now, this is all, as reported, and we're financially stable, solvent, and you've heard the governor, and you listened to the governor this morning, early afternoon, he stated that the state is not receiving, or not incurring their loss revenue, that they participate, they would want to lose. And I think we've indicated also, we won't see what our losses are probably until July, but financially, we're stable to finish out in this year, be able to start, start next year, so we're in very good state, in shape there. We have any other questions on that? Other than COVID-19, we have been approved, you know, into the FEMA portal to drawdowns for some of the monies that are approved right now. Our total, our total expenditure as of today is $5,717.48 of renewable force expenditure. We did approve with the finance committee to, or in the special council meeting, to hire some more people here to work in the parks and to sanitize and make the parks accessible to the citizens. I think all in all, we're in good financial shape to close out the year. With that, the next item on the agenda is resolution of city council approval, end of the year budget.
If you want to share something, you know, share, and we can answer the questions.
I don't know if everybody brought your budget with you that I put in your package, but I'll go through and kind of highlight some things. Most important thing when it comes to the state audit is the bottom line of each department. Then the other ones are internal adjustments to make it balance out to zero, well, even. Also, after doing this, we had a couple of departments turn in a couple of expenses, so it's about to get. So hopefully that, on the 15th, next council meeting, we'll make those, those basically their internal, so that's no, people have to go to the state. So, okay. The mayor's office, we had a couple of departments that, sections that needed some money added to it, and so we took away from some heavy accounts and put it in those two little small accounts, and then we took $20,000 from the mayor's office to go to our apartment's pension plan. Council was okay, the courts office had an excess amount of money, and so after looking at what payroll might be, we had two payrolls left, we took $25,000 from the courts office to make, to put in department's plan, and then we, as you can see, there was a couple negatives, three negatives, so we took some money, $100 here and $1,000 for the internal adjustment. Then we get to the police judge, we needed to add some money, basically because of, we switched, payroll was up, so we had to find some money to add to payroll, plus expenses on, I think it was a collection of fees, so we had to, 300,000, 3,000, so we had to add some more money, and I kind of projected judging from last year what June was, so we had to add about $7,000 there. So the money that we needed to add to the judge's department, $17,310, we'll take out of contingency. The building inspector, he was in good shape, we took $4,500 for him to put in the farm City hall was okay, other than some internal, we had to take a couple thousand from 1-9 item supplies and from the new equipment and put it in supplies to make it come out. We took $52,000 from other buildings. The other buildings was where we put money in there to cover, tear down houses and things like that, so there's only one month left, and we still left, what, $15,000 in there if we need to, if something happens in the next four weeks. So we can always, our new budget will have money in there if it starts up. In Tennessee, we took that $39,310, which had, might have been one there, and the $66,085 out of there to help cover the apartment's pension. Police department, we had to make some internal adjustments, as you see, and we didn't take any money from the police department. They would, they would end up using quite a bit of it, plus he just turned in some car repairs, two car repairs, so that's, take some money from there. Now, the fire department, he had plenty enough to cover his salary for the next two weeks, so he still, still left him a little bit of money in there to, just in case something happened, but we took 20 out of the salary line to put in their pension line. Then we took other, the insurance is our, get this straight, that is, what is our, that's workers' comp, it's not workers' comp, what's the other? That we take out of there, my mind is fluid. Well, anyway, we took $7,000 from that line, and we paid all the insurance.
I'm for it.
Yeah, for the old, for the old year, so that's extra money in there. Then we took 3,000 out of supplies, because he had 55, so that still left him 25,000 for, for the month of June. And we took some 8,000 from the new equipment line, which still left him 9,000 to cover some expenses that had, that came through yet. So overall, we had to, between, between, look at Tennessee and what we've taken from other departments, we had to increase his line already by 242,575. Somewhere I'll get to do that out. Goldwarden, we have, so we have 10,000 there we can take out from the department. Street department, we took 10,000 out, made some internal adjustments, so that'll come up. Street construction, we still left 20,000 in there, hoping we'll get some favor done next month. So we took 20,000 from that, we took 15 from our sanitation department, and then wreck department, we took 20 from.
payroll.
Yep. And then we had to add to our aging, because we didn't put enough money in for that floor downstairs. So there again, that came from our contingency to do that. Of course, now we're going to have a pool, so if we have to run into money, we got money in the pool, 20, or 20 to, I'm sure. So I think overall, everything looks really good.
Yeah, the money for the pool was still, still there, and if we can get light for it, so take care of it.
As we work through this, as I mentioned, I'll share a few things, and of course, if you go to your, the actual chart returning to the state, it summarizes, yes, as the clerk shared, your short budget has line-by-line internal item adjustments, but the staple is your big picture, only when there's a change in the whole department. And again, you see what she just shared, the decreases, there is only three increases, police judge does the extra payroll and workload going on there with our situation, the flooring, and the fire department is getting us primarily all about, there's some equipment primarily all about pension, just to explain to those who watch this on YouTube, hopefully everybody here is kept up to know what we're talking about, but we had to open new accounts, like I explained in the video today, it's like when you have your old checking account, you open a new checking account. You've got to take some money somehow, put it in the new checking account to get it going, until you can close out the old. Well, in our case, we cannot close out the old, it's frozen now for about 30 years, as it gains interest in, in state contributions. So we had to put in our front load, and so we traditionally put in 48,000 a month out of the budget into that, plus now the $5 per household per month that comes in from the municipal fee, but we also had quite a bit of money we had to front load into that at one time. So if you see, as the clerk mentioned, for this year, that fund, normally we get 576,000, we'll be putting in 710, as the legislature had instructed, we'll be right at around 800 and some thousand dollars put in that fund. And so that's where we had to come up with all that extra, you just stream it down out of the other budget categories. So that was the primary, I guess, simple understanding. The increases were 281,885, and then the internal adjustments down was 281,885. And the other thing, what clerk was mentioning to me over in the fire department, the 242,575 total is correct, that's what we're reporting in the state, but if you knew the additions and subtractions, it's 242,585, so there's $10 that Ryan can go back and just make adjustments.
Right here for exact. Right here.
Okay, on, back on the police, but they'll make that $10 correction. So what we're doing in the state is correct, it's just the internal, they're about to adjust $10. So you're being, thinking they're going to estimate exacts, but they'll take care of that, calling Ryan. So that's your outline of everything. Any questions for clerk, as we work through?
I mean, there's been 10, uh, uh, for that.
We incur, any questions?
I understand this right, starting July 1, pension funds will be on even keel. Need to automate, automate contribution, really, we don't like to keep shifting money around in the danger of it to start up.
It'll scale, yes.
Square one.
The front load will be there, that's what we adjusted, there'll still be the career increase, not as great, but you'll have all your municipal fees, plus the, plus.
Yeah, because the start money, the start money, we'll do that all the way. And then we'll get, there will be that $5 fee, it's been running from 11,000 to 15,000, so.
Plus eight months, it's still in the house, but.
Yes, yes.
Our chief, any questions that you all have for, because the 18 and the judge had the adjustments as well, but the, the volunteer bitch, any questions?
I don't have anything. There was one large equipment deal that I already received.
As you get my budget, yeah.
I have no other outstanding equipment, the only thing I have is just, it's a bit of routine things, but shouldn't be, shouldn't be anything else backing me up.
We're off the top of our back, we're off the board, right?
Not today.
What's on next year?
No, it was just, it was just a matter of repair. I showed the writing.
They replaced 13 doors on that, they don't even have to buy it.
Well, at first, it was all EMS trucks.
That's where I'm still buying.
Yeah, hold it.
The increased 18 program against the floor, but the big problem there was the asbestos fake. The big problem there was the asbestos leak that shot it out. Any other questions, any council members have from what Connie presented with, with all the adjustments there? And if you're going page by page, it can get a little tricky as well on that second page. It shows the way the computer did it, shows the difference of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety. And if you do your math, it didn't show on the first page. But if you do your math, it comes out to the exact opposite, positive negative, to come out to zero balance. Any question, Greg?
No, sorry.
Connie, Jim, Steve, Mike. Any other department heads, ask the fire chief, because it was mostly, I think the leader met with all of you, went through this as well. I'm sure you've got enough to get through June thirty. Do you, you all right?
Yeah, I don't think anymore.
Uh, Jim, thirty, oh, we'll get it.
Well, if you get a ready to tear it down by June thirtieth, we'll find you more.
Yeah, but I bet we, we can, we can put that on that.
Put that on what, like them ready?
Yeah.
I hope we will.
Scott, did you have any questions? No other questions then? We have to call the county, we'll have to do a roll call. But, yeah, so do we have a motion, and they're often asked that.
Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution, city council approving at the end of the year, at the year end of budget adjustment. There's been a motion by council, they need to approve the resolution, the city council approving at the end of the year budget adjustment. Seconded by council, the board, the board officer will have a roll call vote. Paul's turn.
Steve Onit?
Yes.
Mike Skipio?
Yes.
Doug Lashman?
Yes.
Gray Hudson?
Yes.
Gray Wolf?
Yes.
Bonnie Thompson?
Yes.
Jim Hughes?
Yes.
Lynn the Bowls?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Anything else we have on financing, finances?
We'll get into the one-on-one invoices. Thank you.
Anybody else? My name's Chris.
What's that?
If teachers thought, pull your mouths now.
It's a matter of law.
It's all a video.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. And next item on the agenda is first reading of ordinance seven eighty-six.
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance seventy-six, first motion. Make the criminal offense enter a trespass and condemn the man that opposed the structure.
There's been a motion by council of Skipio to approve the first reading of ordinance seven eighty-six. To make the criminal offense enter a trespass and condemn the man that opposed the structure. Seconded by council, the board. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I think we got, we finally got here.
Will that, will that be a ticket of defense?
It mentions there's options. First, first offense could be taken with a fine up to a hundred dollars or up to thirty days in jail. Or community service or pre-trial. But second offense, I understand this mayor correct, there's no community service or pre-trial. It's either the fine or the jail, correct?
Okay, okay. Correct on all that and yes on your question. Yes, it is a ticket of, it is a ticket of defense.
It's up to the option, correct? So as far as the second part goes?
It's up to the judge. Now whether the police issues of the citation or whether the building inspector.
I think criminal offense, I have.
Okay, so you like to, you like to call the police department, they went in. The citation, and then it'll come to the court and the judge will decide whether he's going to fine him, jail him, or give him the option of.
To use their.
So that'll be laid out in the court systems. Whether pleadings and, like, decide to go to the hearing to prosecute, prosecute the court. Any other questions? I'm getting the island camera. You're on the list. That okay, exactly. Any further questions or comments? Big none? All those in favor in the ca- oh, sorry, can't do that. Roll that roll call.
Steve Onit?
Yes.
Mike Skipio?
Yes.
Doug Lashman?
Yes.
Gray Hudson?
Yes.
Gray Wolf?
Yes.
Bonnie Thompson?
Yes.
Jim Hughes?
Yes.
Lynn the Bowls?
I'm telling you, I can't honestly say something at this point. You know, we, we had our, a lot of citizen outcry back in August or September about this issue. We listened to the citizens, counseled up together. We called, we called our, our delegates, Senator Jeff Reeves, Nancy, the ones who mentioned the board, Bert, Captain, uh, Scab. Even I think Rick Hall came down, he was the minister. And they all came down, September twenty-eighth, to a public forum. And we discussed it openly with everybody and they took a pact of, of legislature. And they made it a legitimate, they were, the local is, get it passed. So they did get it passed and legislative, the governor signed it. It officially goes into effect on June the fourth under the governor's signature. That's the reason we're having our ordinance readings now. So we'll have our second meeting in, uh, June the eighteenth. And then our next council meeting. And then it will go into effect thirty days after that. So by the end of July, we should be able to put a little bit more teeth in, in our enforcement on some of these issues. Okay, good business. Payment to one vehicle for legal fees.
I'll make a motion, we, please pay that to one vehicle for legal fees in five cases in the amount of six hundred dollars and three cents.
There's been a motion by council of Skipio for payment to one vehicle for legal fees on five cases in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred dollars and twenty-two cents. Seconded by council, the board. Big none? All those in favor in the ca- must say aye.
Aye.
All those, no, no extensions, no, no, we carry. Next item on the agenda is approval to repair the hydraulics of RV truck number twelve, or that's two, tractor company.
I make a motion, we approve the payment, uh, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six hundred feet in amount. To repair the hydraulics of the RV truck.
There's been a motion by council of Skipio to approve the repair of the hydraulics of RV truck number twelve, or that's two, tractor company. Had a cost not conceived, one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Seconded by council, the board. Any further comments or clarifications?
Is that, is that what causes the trash, Eddie?
No, that, yeah. It won't be, that one won't be. The, uh, part that hooks to the blade that flips up and pulls the trash, that popped loose. And they said they could repair it in May last day or whatever, it could last a year. But they advised me.
Like the big?
Yeah, that they could flip one. And so what they recommended is we replace it. They happen to have one in stock. They said they can have it finished tomorrow if we got the approval. Uh, because they keep extra ones in stock for Charleston, Charleston, few trucks that they have, they exact same style. So they'll replace it and then reorder a new one for Charleston.
The garbage truck B uses a drain hole in the, in the.
We're not allowed to drain them anymore until we get to the dome.
So it's one of the.
Well, that's because the, as we pulled it up. If it rains a lot, get ready. If you're the first few stops of the day, you're going to get it.
We had the motion by council of Skipio, seconded by council, and Thompson, and for conference, firstly. Big none, all those in favor in the ca- must say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, 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 no tears.
Yes, Charles. You have fixed twice.
Got me out. It's not over here. Hey, next item on the agenda is repairs to the wine cellar part, caretaker town. I think Mr. Jones has information he wants to go over with you, some of that.
At the meeting we had, uh, Thursday, I was supposed to sit down and try to get some estimates, what I could, for the repairs of the house. And this is just some of the stuff I came in just looking online. You'll see what we can find. Uh, on there, I, I didn't give everybody a copy, I forgot to. If I got it, if you want. I did get an estimate for the laying of the floor. The new flooring, it needs to go down into three bedrooms. And I think a little bit of the hallway, uh, it was eleven, one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars to lay it. I think it was like four hundred and, four hundred and seven square feet. But as far as the flooring, I've not had to go check it out yet. Because we're really going to have to match this up. This stuff is fifteen years old, trying to match it for the same color. I did meet with, um, two HVAC companies out there today. One, I did get an estimate, it did arrive with an estimate, it's in this sheet that I gave y'all. That was Casto Tech. The other was supposed to give me a estimate hopefully tomorrow. And I'm still waiting on the third person to come out and meet with me to look at that.
Who mentioned that?
Casto and Pierce.
Was that, this, that estimate raised, Jason, outrageous, Chicago heat, it was been four days.
Uh, we are allowed now with a.
Twelve now, uh. They, is it a little miles out there? Probably two ton unit.
It is two ton unit. They said it'd be a two ton, uh, heat pump. With all the ductwork going up into the attic and down.
No, we have probably not.
But, uh, the new caretaker, I had been out there ripping out cabinets and tearing up the floor, getting everything out. He did notice, uh, he texted me last night late, said he did see some water damage in all three bedrooms. None of the carpet like into the support, so he could put a little bit more into that. Don't know where the water's coming from, but we'll, he's going to research that out for us.
Could be an animal?
Yeah.
Probably a dog. Well, he had a dog, a little dog.
But it was a dog.
Right, he had a little one he kept in the house.
Mike said, I'm still waiting on, uh, the third estimate, but this is about what I'm going with. I'm just trying to get this moving out there because I know y'all was here last Thursday about somebody cutting that pole up to the lake. When we went and got it fixed today, it was one of these only seventy dollar beds. They went up the back, we already got a back up there and backable. But as I think as well, somebody did go up there where the boat guy, or not the dog, but the fish appeared. There was a cable through there that one y'all put up. Somebody went and threw that out.
Got it, did they get it?
It's all stripped down. I don't know if it's cut, I didn't get to look at it, Frank didn't want my friend to look at it. Plus, I guess people wanted to be made and go turn over trash cans off this park.
Did what, Bob?
Turn trash cans off. It could have been some animals, but, I mean, it was all over the park.
Probably two of them, thank you.
Probably deer.
Send your favor employee.
I did.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
You've got, you've got, I, I thought, three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If you'd like to get started on that, right?
Basically, I know Jim wanted to put, have a little bit more input about what we just want to expect from probably this job. Didn't you mention?
Well, we don't, we're missing kitchen cabinets and big things at HVAC. And since we're not doing things at the pool, we can track grass for another two weeks out there. I'd like to see us get exact, take estimates on the HVAC, see exactly what's going to cost. And then we can put that total on here and come back to it in two weeks and they can make the main decision on it.
Well, in the meantime, we could, uh, make sense of the, uh, sorry, on the agenda, we can approve this, we can start this and we can get the HVAC and that.
We, we can do that.
That way, that way you can go and get started, I think, I want to do.
There is, uh, one more thing that he did find, where the kitchen sink is. That right back there is pretty bad too, from water leak. And it's a little like sawdust. This is all stuff that he can do, basically, except for the flooring and the HVAC.
That's just, does it have particle board?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just a matter of pulling the particle board out, you fly with it down.
But you go put new cabinets in, don't have new cabinets?
Well, but I mean, they're tearing the cabinets out, so it's not a problem to get in there.
That's just stuff he's finding as he's starting to work on things out there.
So there wasn't no water under the house, right?
Well, yeah, I understand, the mayor told us there was no water really underneath the house, right? Am I correct?
Correct, there's a, there's a vapor barrier underneath the house. Route from sanitary floor crawl underneath there. And there is, everybody said there was water running underneath there. There is a water running, there's, there's some moisture, uh, not underneath the plastic, but there's not, there's not water running underneath.
So probably, not, not, excluding HVAC, because again, like Jim said, we need detailed bits of that. But excluding HVAC, the materials and things and flooring, are you looking at three thousand, four thousand, five thousand? What to, to be safe.
And, and what I did on some of these estimates I could find, I did go a little higher, just to be safe. Because I was going off the Lowe's website, you know, about what we need. I am no carpenter, I am nothing, so I really don't know much about this, so I'll do my best. But I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking around five, I guess, with the cabinets. I don't know how much cabinets are going to cost. There were so many different cabinets when I want to start going through there and I just.
Well, I think the answer is maybe taking a motion to approve what's on the list right now. And then on the eighteenth, we could add details for cabinets and HVAC. Now whether we put split units in or whether we put mid-air conditionings and like that. Basically, we'll have to make that decision once you get.
And I approve another amount, everybody's okay with that then. And then I'll make a motion and we go, approve thirty-nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and five cents. Get, get started on the wine cellar house. And that's with the factor that once we get a price for HVAC and a kitchen, we'll come back to it later down the road.
Two hundred and fifty dollars?
So the total amount will be thirty-nine, seventy-seven and five, get started.
Two hundred and five or thirty dollars?
Pardon me.
Two hundred and five thousand or thirty dollars?
Yeah, we can, including kitchen cabinets, that's just two, two thousand bucks and just make six thousand bucks off the oven. There's a little off the cabinets, so we actually get some numbers when we're seeing what we want. Let's go ahead and do what we got here.
Four thousand?
I think it'd be easier if we meant it to four thou- up to four thousand until the next meeting, so we don't hang all the pennies.
Well, kitchen cabinets, that's fine, we can like, we can.
Kitchen cabinets in the area, but these are.
It's not all there.
We definitely have cabinets. You made a motion.
Did you make one exactly, like, exactly around that?
Jim, you want?
Yeah, I made a motion, we put them out here and then what was it?
Four thousand?
Four thousand dollars, just now.
I'll stay.
There's been a motion by council of the news to approve, uh, say, repair the wine cellar part, caretaker house. As presented on Mr. Jones's itemization for various items, hoping not to exceed four thousand dollars. Second duty, by Councilman Paulus. Any further questions, comments, clarifications? Just, uh, I need a question. Where, where that money come from?
Is there's money in the red department?
We, we didn't budget adjustment. We, we left money in there. Hopefully, we have to get some of that. Any further comments? Question. They done all those in paper indicates by saying I.
Ah.
All those opposed? No. Extensions, none? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is crews for forty-four.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that, um, we approve the repair, each crew for forty-four. I have five duty board and the cost not exceed twenty-two hundred thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Second, hundred and seventy.
Okay, there's been a motion, uh, uh, Councilman Wolf to, uh, to approve repairs to police crew number forty-four by five duty board. That calls not exceed two thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Seconded by Councilman Hughes. Any further questions?
Chief, this was the tire steering bracket, is it correct?
It's, it's the whole tire steering, it sounded like, not just the front, it's all the same.
This is separate from the other crews?
It'll be at the next. I was thinking about that part. Yeah.
Any further questions? They done all those in the paper indicates by saying I.
Ah.
All those opposed? No. No extensions, no, motion carries. But he does have another vehicle that he told me, I guess, like Thursday or early Friday, that's got a, uh.
That. Obviously, if you would, because the downstairs, it's not that permanent. I mean, do you have that?
The other car is not to be expected, because the top, it was a top duty. It was definitely on a missed diagnosis. We thought that'd be a high dollar ticket and it's not gonna be about three, three hundred fifty.
Oh, just instead of purchase or?
So it's not gonna be similar to this what we was turning it on.
At first, we thought it was gonna be one of twenty-four, twenty-five hundred dollars. Yeah, just, just the other that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is department has. Police Chief Moss.
Thanks, Mayor Council, um, citizens. We just discussed other cars. That car is not to be what we thought it was. Appreciate your prompt attention in this other car, so we get it back. Hope it's about end of the week. Also, there's a lot going on in the nation and the state. We're always preparing much in those events, especially if you don't have it at home. Bring some plans in place. Appreciate some councilmen, staff. We work together, that's a thanks, man, for preparation that may be. Any questions? Thanks, sir. We appreciate you guys being out there and just trying hard.
Uh, next is, uh, Department Chief Thordeel.
Mayor Council. The big repairs that you guys approved last meeting on five five two are complete, trucks packed on the road in service. Well, came in five cents cheaper than what you approved. Stay behind more, sir. But I still have to get tires that you guys already approved prior to that. Assuming that's still good to go, I'll be talking with the mayor about getting the tires on it. But all is well with it.
Do you have the county's truck back to them today?
I definitely next. I called them today and said they're gonna be coming within the next day or two and getting their. They'll be coming and taking it. Giving it to the next unlucky department, these four. It seems to get moving right now.
Yeah, it's, you know, we really need to extend the thank you out to the, uh, emergency services commission. They, they've invested a lot of emergency, um, revenue on money into purchasing a, an engine that they consent throughout the departments in the, in Colorado Valley. We have issues and with all the trouble we've had on five five two, I think we've had that thing for one, five months.
It pushed. We had the truck for a while. We, we had it, I sent it back for two or three days and I had to go back and beg and eat and got back, so.
Now, is there an oil change or anything we need to do on that?
I talked to them about that. Uh, I did talk to them about it because I knew, you know, had me in close. And they, they already had it scheduled for a service. It's, it's part of their agreement they have with someone. And they were gonna have to come and get it and borrow it for a day to do that anyway soon. So that's something you're already gonna be able to do. Already part of their contract. So I did, I did talk to them. We're good to go on this. It should be going back to them within a day or two. I did write an IC email through. And I'll do another one through CW to extend our gratitude to the county commission. Extended, overextended use of their. Garage doors that the mayor mentioned, that I don't even know how to call them, but it's big, similar to them. Minor repair.
It was just, just some springs. Wasn't?
Tires. Springs that go up and down for three thousand pounds of years. The problem with those doors is, is they are so big, fourteen feet tall, that's just too big for us to be able to handle ourselves. I would admit, uh, our newest probationary firefighter that we hired, we've given him a, what we call a pre-shifted, to get him from straight day working over to the twenty-four hour working. We gave that to him after, and I, I didn't forget that piece of paper. I think he scored ninety-four percent. Ninety-four, ninety-six percent. And, uh, we completed that today. Written and a physical test. So he'll be starting on the shift Monday, on the twenty-four hour shifts versus every day. I wanna be clear, that doesn't mean he is completely fully released without having to work with somebody. He's not, we're not quite there yet. But he has shown leaps and bounds as far as everything we threw at him. Good memorization. He knows where he's going. He's studying the streets. We felt like he has a pretty good idea where he's going, but we don't feel like he has the experience yet to be turned completely loose and out there functioning on his own just yet. But I don't think that'll be too far away. For certain, that'll definitely be within the six month range when we hire him. One thing I will say, we can put him onto the ship at record speed, you know, if everybody else do it this way. Some of that I contribute to his prior experience. So I'm pretty excited and he's excited with departments. We put a lot of hours in training. COVID nineteen up to this birthday. Spent a lot of hours in training. So very excited for him and, uh, actually, he'll, he'll go on ship starting Monday with twenty hours. Which will be the same hours that he's working now.
Which stations he gonna work out now?
He will be working at, uh, the Rock Slant Station with one of the new tenants. Starting on the cabin. Putting him on the scene also. So he's starting to drive on some things and start working on that actual response part now. Now that we've covered all the basic training and knowledge. And he comes with a lot of that, his problem. The problem was not how to do the job once he got there. It was figuring out where to get it. So, and I feel like we're coming along with that.
But he, he had some experience.
Yes, he had quite a bit of actual, on the scene, you know, on the scene stuff. But he had no idea where he was going and all that. So now we'll start focusing on that. Okay, I'll be able to report back to you. Hop sooner than later. He's met the criteria of everything and we're completely gonna be able to release him. So that we don't have to. What I'm trying to say is, is he's, he's gonna be that fourth gallon ship, but at the same time, I can't work him as a as a, as a person that can work on their own, so it doesn't cure my mandatory overtime media events like the E O or whatever on that shit. Doesn't cure it just yet. But we're, we are a little bit closer than we ever have been. Anybody else would be pretty excited. That's all I have there. I take another one. I'll take any other question you have.
I'm watching.
I'm gonna wait a minute. Hey, son.
That smell we got.
Okay, actually, we'll have the, uh, sanitary department, Mr. Matt Nelson.
Mayor Council. Uh, apologize for my tardiness. I thought we were starting at seven. I didn't prepare that. Tomorrow, we are gonna start tearing up roads that have been needing repairs since last fall. About the weather and the rain we've had, uh, we have been going jump on that sixteenth street, some places in South Drive. Uh, your drain inlet there to top Steel Drive Street and part of Steel Street. Um, and two other little places that we worked around, that found. Today, I submitted a, the D wage. We're getting ready to lay a line to help alleviate these storm flow on the Rock Slant Road. And we hope to hear back from that in three cities. So we'll be starting on that as soon as we get to that.
You know, we'll take the road back when we live.
That's still there too, yes. That I gotta let it thrive. I gotta get back up there with my stride. Because if I don't, that hole.
There's all kinds of, uh, all over the city where, Washington, you automatically repairs and never came back and.
Yes.
I mean, you have somebody, whoever's on you, somebody's got a lark, I mean, I mean, they're all.
Right, um, I know that they contracted all, all their repairs.
Right, they do.
And usually they try to look till they get enough to, uh, dump truck load asphalt. So I don't know what's still where you're gonna bank it to the burn and head.
Yeah, we need somebody to follow up on that. I mean, they're, they're down here in the valley. They're up in the hills everywhere.
Uh, so I have any questions?
Man, follow up to, uh, five.
The drainage issue?
Well, we got the drainage issue. We got some other rad issues.
Rad issue, I can't do anything about.
Somebody can dig out there and find out if it's rad and go over the water, just to make a call.
Yeah, um, Ms. Pearson was telling me about that and.
So we looked at it.
Yeah, me and you looked at it too. So, uh, I mean, Governor Dickie was wanting to, but I don't know what.
Well, tell them, yes.
Doesn't leave the side that will not undermine the air consumption?
Uh, it's not undermining, it's all kind of hopeless. How we're going in the tunnel.
It's a rear. It's coming back in, it's her down low. Try that first. Get ready for the smell. Well, if you get the, first couple of times, have dehydrator built in, it'll, it'll.
Oh, dehydrator when they die, so they don't stink.
It just, but they're cold. Right. Turn hair, the, 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 the.
That water problem there, you know, like.
Yeah, please talk about phosphorus that the drain in there.
I think Mike thought.
Okay, uh, we can look at that when we start doing some paving. Because, uh, right now, it's a week to prepare to get a load.
That would be, that would, that would be stopped.
Champagne department worked a while ago.
Yeah.
Now, don't y'all get excited.
We're gonna take care of it before we move it too far.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Drain in the alley between eighteenth and nineteenth. Second four hundred block, had four plugged cars, just last year.
Is it stopped up?
There is.
There is no drain.
I can't ever get anybody to put one in here for it. I could've paid in three years.
You never actually in mind?
Yes, I have.
Now you have?
You said I had to get the mayor's approval.
Oh, okay.
Between everyone, you gotta, somebody I couldn't offer the answer. But that was a dream we're getting.
Oh, yeah, you already. Yes.
Go get it, ask them to look for it and so we can present it up our house.
And you do, they'll come towards paying, that's where the drain.
HP and Nineteenth Valley, second.
Yes.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah. They can place it out here. It's by Tramvlog?
Yes. The grain came in this week. Um, that was a special water item and I think they have some stuff to bring it out of Wisconsin. But it is in. We will get it installed hopefully this weekend.
My guys can do that.
They don't have it. No, I think it's still up, they've done it for me. We haven't picked it up yet. They did all came in Monday.
We'll be there.
Okay, Mr. Leish.
Please, Mayor Council. I'm trying to be quicker first.
That's where I'll shoot it.
Yes, I like that. Secretary, my phone won't stop. We're, I'm working with, uh, one of our local renter landlords to get a few houses. We get them for now quick, on Dutch Hall, uh, or, 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 our avenue. That's, uh, Steve's working on that. But, uh, I want you to poke up the gun, not this, this question. Get it done. The church over on Sixth Street is boarded up. They broke it back in, or get it. I was by it today. They, they broke it, uh, clean. They, they don't like it.
I suppose they're bringing it out, but House on, remember, West Virginia.
What do they use, they?
Uh-huh, right on the corner. There's a little garage or something.
Yeah, there is a garage.
Okay, walk down West Virginia Avenue with weed eaters and, um, one of them things called snow blowers and stunders and they go straight into that garage.
It's Crystal's boyfriend's grandmother's house. Yeah, they'll talk about that.
It's that garage, yes, bowl of, well, I don't have to say real long, but I'm sure they sell it. That's where our.
That, uh.
Ten or twelve.
You didn't count it this year. It's supposed to be in control of that because she died, it's best thing. No will, no, uh, executive order for these things, so David County was over there praising it, Ross. Haven't heard anything. And then they closed the courthouse that, so they haven't done anything. Hopefully, we'll get back on it. They go board the door up, maybe that'll keep them out of it. Well, it was boarded up. They took, I went by it today in the closet for the back door, just in the kitchen now. It was literally so bad that, uh, I had a house that was more boarded up, you know, thirteen, a bit more. And the neighbor was watching it for my little ledger and said I hadn't been gone an hour before they broke my door. So I'm raising. So I went over and started running three and a half minutes in my quarters and, and they, they literally tore the whole door and frame off when they broke into that.
I stopped and talked to him about that, who makes dragon stuff.
Sorry, talking.
Now I did. I said, why don't you get that stuff? I know you didn't buy it. I said, I said, I'm gonna, where you making all that stuff out and where you dragging it to that's going down the road? They said, okay, ma'am.
You went on down the road, but it's drunk.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't.
I had not heard of that.
We're, uh, nobody will protect the grass this year for whatever reason. Oh, yeah. Uh, so we able to, I'm home, Scott's guys are having a hard enough time keeping up with the city grass with all the rain that's happened. Uh, we are plugging home in private property, so.
Yeah, we love these.
Yeah, that's really all I have. I'm just working for them. The house on Rock Slant Road, eighteen twenty-seven, where the roof was about ready to fell, under some, with claps now, probably knew that house. They are slowly, they were working on it, repairing it now, and she got called back to work. So she said she'd be back in a week or two, finish with the block. They removed the tree, they removed the roof. I can't remember if they put the side walls and everything on. So they're gonna take a complete. Thirty-one is going to be.
Thirty-one is going to be completely gone. And when the cop fire their Sunday, what's up with it? When they're opening the court, when you first start up Rock Lane, when you let, you would probably know anything about it.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Did they let it burn?
No, they won't let it.
Why would we give that?
So he can get rid of them.
It's, uh, it's being looked at from a, it has to go through the fire department's local investigation. We don't even have to kill these two.
It does. It does. This point is the channel where it's gonna be tore down later, right?
I believe so.
Okay. This is the first one on the line in history?
Yeah, yeah.
Some evening here, cop fire. Not the one that goes up the rusty staircase?
Yeah.
Yeah. On the windy staircase up that footpath.
One to the...
Past there.
It's a straight stairway.
Yeah.
Okay. I've already looked at it a couple times, I mean, you've ever looked at it? Yeah, I was up there about a month ago, I guess.
We actually ended up running it higher twice than the same thing, right? I would let him speak for himself.
I was gonna go to the ground now. We have E.D. Russell that's staying up there. That house beside it, the go mart over on sixteen street, they have kicked the back door in all of them, once had the adlock on the back door. It's all kicked in.
Like, you could say, literally, we've been running around boarding up every house this late. We're gonna be back in in an hour or two. We tried the best we can to deep the house. I mean, can we not face the sign, you know, once we have the signs facing like what we're doing now, because it's all trespassing? I've been waiting for us to arrest him. You can ask Miles talking about this all a year ago. I'm not getting what I'm saying, just now it's been passed and ordered, so... Well, we can't exactly worry about the state yet, so...
Right.
Was this, was this person that, so we gotta wait till the end. Then we can start putting signs when you get it out. I feel like there's somebody, oh, we're posted anyway, but I wore them up, they're posted.
Thirty days after the eighteenth of June, we'll be able to arrest him.
Yeah, I would, I'd love it.
You know, it's like two oh six, Dunbar Avenue, you went down there and posted that, the next day, it was like, the sign was gone.
Yeah.
You have a couple questions. Maybe water, I know it's not us, but it's water gas on four hundred block and twenty, there's two, four thirty for two, and then down around four fourteen. I'm a gas collector, they done their stuff, left it. There's cones there, they're piled up, we...
I can answer that.
That is a gas company?
Yes. The gas company came in, and then the code had started, and they covered it up and left. And then they got rerouted, they have them off.
It's actually done, or done, done.
Nah, that's Mark's.
It's out of Kentucky.
Mark's next van.
Mark's.
They were already lined in, but they left it. Yeah, so yeah, it's straight. Absolutely.
It's awful. And then also, do we have, has the judge come up with any dates to do with the rain on that property or any way or...
Um, what's the next quarter?
July seventh.
No, there's another. He's got one next week. Oh, I didn't know something.
There's one tomorrow. He's going one tomorrow, and I think the next Tuesday.
Next Thursday.
One Thursday?
No. Longest same human ever with special invitation.
So it's Father's Saturday, and it wasn't as bad, but I'm sure by today it's as bad.
Oh, yeah. He'll be carrying stuff out of it, we're trying to correct. I mean, it's Steve X God, anybody's deal, everybody's been up there. He, he, just for whatever reason, does not get it. I don't know what the deal is with him.
He doesn't think there's anything wrong with his property.
Yeah, he thinks... We, we literally got him over at Kroger, they like, made him sit on his hundred cycle for three and a half hours. And went like, he didn't have driver's license. So he didn't move his hundred cycle. They were arresting, so we sat there watching. So he went, he, he knows what you're doing all the time. He's a Joe. Joe's talking about it.
It's horrible.
I went for Friday, and all the neighbors, of course, they come out and, you know, and know what's going on. We go and clean it. Scott goes and cleans it up, and next day it looks the same as what it did the day before. I get, they're recalling the lead on it, you know, and I tell them what we done, and they say things, but it's right like that. They wanna know why we haven't had any boards, and I've been complaining to them due to COVID, that we haven't had boards, and that we are, you know, we're doing everything we need, we can. But you said the fourth day for us is coming. Thanks, sir. I believe, I put whatever bond we sent away, but I know it's...
With your grass, at least grass list, third and fifth, or, who left their level large?
Already, already.
Ready to go. Also, the gas company has not done anything with that alley down there. Sixteen, seventeen street, which we have, and it's grabbed a couple of points again, but it's covered. What about the jump cord down there?
My God, this is happening, and plus the concrete. I would do my best to get there, listen. I'm no guaranteeing, you know, we don't get permission to touch it on the ground. My office has been, it took me two hours to write three paragraphs of that.
You gotta just fail it, you're doing it wrong.
You what?
You gotta just fail it.
I keep, I keep breathing, so... I'll get hold of the lady up at the, at the next lady. Put the converter, she told me she passed it off to the boss about the alley. So I will get hold of her again, tell her I want some done.
We got several cuts at the end, like out here by the bank.
That was awesome. We had some undermining. And we, yeah, that will be fixed hopefully this week or next week. That's one of the ones we're...
Well, you call them like, you got a percent. Right, I can say, it's not like...
So we get several places.
Right.
They cut out like that.
Half an hour, half your hour, I had to cut something like that.
But I was all perfect and jacked, and that's why they complain.
The downtown, I'm like, can you handle that?
I'll get a call. Bye, y'all.
Okay, Mr. Elliott. Mayor Council?
Only thing I got is to try and keep up the grass, to keep up with the double the trash. And March road flooded on Thursday night, and we spent all day Friday unclogging the culverts and everything, finding back through the pool and stuck stuff out. Uh, water shouldn't be running better down through there. Eventually, we hope to get on to the paving projects, but with three guys, it's kinda hard to get all that stuff going. I don't wanna go around a machine with just three guys and not be able to finish. So, we're looking at probably first of July, but we'll be able to get really going on the alleys and the potholes everywhere and things. I'm, I'm running three guys, I'm running them as fast as they come in, we're finishing one job and pushing them out the door to the next job. Picking up double the trash, we're picking up couches, uh, bedding material, all the best stuff that I pick, we're in a dump trucks now and taking it to the dump, except putting it in the trash truck, so that we don't have the door problems anymore. Uh, that's taking two to three guys. If they're bed bug ridden, of course, we're picking them up in the back though, that's my three guys, and they're on the road most of the time. We're trying to keep up with it, helping the grass crew out as fast, you know, if there's nothing else going there, I help the grass, including myself.
He still has dealers out, he knows somebody that wants to go to work for the grass group, we're still hiring more people. You know, we just, it doesn't matter what's gonna work, man, they're making more money than I'm earning.
Yeah, I like it on that.
I got extended, so we must have one power.
I'm sorry. I was at the master.
Somebody was, I'm confused, if you still hire, I'll ask.
I need at least three more. At least. I could do some more. We're gonna start putting them in here, have them, have them stay over when the evening comes, and working on Saturdays, probably just to get the grass done and that.
Our recycle's open, isn't all recycle or a section, sir.
We're only allowed to take cardboard and paper now, and all cardboard and paper has to be dumped into the, uh, containers and no plastic bags whatsoever, and no plastic. They will take metal, if it's certain types of metal, we gotta have that dumped in metal too. We're picking up refrigerators, stones, washing dryers, and that kind of stuff to put in there. But they don't want tin cans from soup, they don't want the aluminum cans involved in that. Anything that anybody can touch or drink, they don't want. But it's not getting washed.
If you don't mind, right, I'm actually worried, Jeffrey, pick up our church in the alley, we cleaned out the garage today, so there's...
I'm sorry?
In our church in the alley, we cleaned out the garage today, so...
Is it powered in the...
It's old signs, everything's right there.
Is it trying to spin? All right.
Are you taking, still taking electronics? If people hobble down there?
Yeah, they're going in the back of the garbage truck. If it's not too big, they can put it in the back, or come down the garbage, you can take them.
Oh, I've been telling people that.
We're not recycling, they do not come and give anymore. The landfill has had a lock on taking them, and they've opened that up.
Okay.
Because it wasn't feasible, or just take them some trash.
Okay, good news.
Thanks, sir.
And everybody in their city is cutting everything down.
Yeah. They got that all at this, out on sixteen street.
I got it this morning. You talking about sixteen?
I stopped, told him he couldn't do that, it was blocking sidewalk. And I, he's wild blue wherever you are.
He didn't.
I know he did.
First thing I did this morning was get that can out. That jumped him to the protocol list.
He did.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Mr. Jones.
Really? I fought for him once, didn't I? All right, well, um, well, we haven't discussed, thank you all for approving that. We can get really started on, on that house out there. I know what tomorrow we are going to go get the paint for it. Um, like I said, the gate's fixed, uh, went down to the pool today with the sanitary port crew to get the air out of the new lines that they ran. So we won't have no blowouts, bike out, and use check ins, there were no leaks.
I think that's city leaks, yeah.
So we've started draining that, so we can start hosing on it and getting it done. I even sent my favorite down there to cut the weeds out around the cracks in the pool and everything. Uh, still working on Reynolds, trying to get contact Reynolds, that's saying that, you know, we're not having them, it's first come, first served. Uh, I said we'll meet with another H-VAC. Uh, later on this week, I'll start looking at when can we have a dive-in movie night? I know it's what everybody's wanted, so I'm trying to look at what South Charleston's doing, Charleston, and St. Albans.
We don't really care what they're doing.
Well, I don't want to do them the same night, sir.
Why?
I don't know.
We're what dumb are people here going to do?
Well, I know, I just, full of love to see about what we can show. Uh, I, while we'll be working on that and a few other things. But, uh, right now, my guys are not on grass right now, we'll be doing the pool for like the next two, maybe three days, trying to get it ready, so we can get it cleaned and everything going, and running right. His name.
What, what guys are at the pool? Frank and Bill?
Frank, Bill, and, uh, Alec. My favorite one.
Yeah, we need somebody a better one for Y.T.
What are you whining about? All right, guys.
So where's the issue with them?
Not like this, bro. Uh, but that's all I have right now, unless y'all got any questions.
All right, we'll start with the council, we'll do this.
I'd just like to acknowledge our apartment heads, especially all the employees, everybody's been working so hard, and everything's been going, they were kind of just talking to them. That's about it.
Just, I give one thank Chris and his crew. Last Thursday, drive by the fire station. And there's activity happening in my planter, I plant the flowers there. And I'm looking, and I'm like, what is, what's happening there? So then I think, okay, so I had to go somewhere, come by. And there's some man there, and he has taken all of the plants out of the planter except for two. And I'm like, what the? So I turn my Jeep around, and I go back to the planter, and I say, not my words, "What are you doing?" And he says, "He's one of the local town drunks, and he walks by here every day, and he saw that we had weededs, and he said that he wanted to help out his city and his somebody. So he just, going home, getting intoxicated, he decided to pull weeds, so he pulled all plants out, so he could figure out where the weeds were." So, I say, "Put those plants back in there." And he said, "Well, as soon as I finish weeding." And I'm like, "No, put the plants back in there." And so then I go ahead and proceed to go home, and I'm, and the whole time I'm living, I'm like, lived. And I go home, and then the next morning, I drive by, six o'clock in the morning, I look over, there's still only two plants. So I'm like, what? And I had to go to work, I work. I'm like, so then I called two people to ask who to go replant the plants for me. But in the meantime, Chris and his guys came in, I guess around seven.
What do you have?
They saw what was happening, they saw they didn't get replanted, and they took it on themselves to replant my plants. They may not be in the numerical order I had them, where the collars can I had them, or in the, I put the tall ones in the front, and the short ones on the outside, so the tall ones will cover the short ones, but they're replanted. And then my friends, which I'll say is Matt, uh, Morals and Sarah, Sarah's fine, uh, they took some water and watered them. Um, as Chris and I talked today, we think they may live, they're looking better, but if anyone ever drives by the fire bed at the fire station, and they see some man helping me, please stop and tell him, no, call, he doesn't want any help. Let the weeds go, she will get them. Okay, I'm done. That's how I went with it. But then I told myself, I haven't got the COVID, nobody I know has got the COVID, so this will be okay. I'm done.
I just want to thank all of our apartment heads, especially Chief Moss, for taking the safety of all the officers, um, implementing a plan for that. But also, Chief, the garage door in the bingo building has never been fixed correctly. I would like to be able to get an estimate on that, because it's, that door's getting really bad. To get out, and it's in, it's gonna eventually burn up the motor on the opener. But that's all I've got, thank you.
I have nothing, so you just might see Chris and you before y'all leave, please.
Chris Maye?
Yep.
Just taking a moment to, uh, for us, and anybody watching as well, to thank the fire police again. Thanks for trying times, and encourage us to pray for our nation for both the peace and justice, both, those two items together, they have to be linked together. I'm gonna praise now, and maybe quote it in reverse, because I'm, I'm sister how we get our lefts and rights backwards. I'm gonna praise now, it's a good way to remember it's peace on the right hand and justice on the left, or again, we had it backwards, but, uh, that's what we need to pray for for our nation during these times, because it's a very troubling time, so many people. Appreciate the fire police for their efforts to be, uh, prepared and to be cautious at the same time, Chris.
I just want to say thank you for all the city employees, for everything that they do, working with each other, trying to take care of the city with what they have to take care of, take care of with. And we've been blessed that it hasn't had any fruit virus break us, and our employees was good time. So thank all the city employees, Chris.
First of all, there's a big bush there about on field, I'm wearing a gizmo. It's blocked with the marquee and everything else. You need to cut it out or run it out, or do something for the safety of your people.
He's right with that.
I just don't know for some reason. Die, it's, it's that burning bush.
Yeah, and my old big old green bush.
It's tall.
Yeah. Also, I, I'd like to ask everybody that's running the office to be sure, after this primary election, take it down here, so that's because I just bring, uh, they, they make the city look, really, really good. And you, you know, we got six months between primary and general, you're running any kind of election for the fact, but it's getting down, it's a lot of work.
Well, it's a, it's a huge burden for the grass group.
Yes.
To try to mow around all these things that are pumped up there. Just a good, just a good.
I'm sure, I, I don't see anything wrong with the rest, if they can down, if they lay them, lay them down, then it's gonna go back up, but I don't think it's right, the rest, you just try to mow them.
Technically.
Well, we still.
Technically, we're not supposed to, it's illegal.
They're technically not even supposed to be where they're at.
Yeah, you're right.
But, but it's, you're not supposed to be pulling campaign signs, so.
But you're more county and state politicians than you are city politicians.
The highway department issue, so there shouldn't even be one on the R.A.
Anywhere.
Mike mentioned, they shot down, they all, they had them down there, yep.
We have.
If you, if you, if you, if you lose in the primaries, it has to be down within five days or twenty days, whatever it is. But somebody who gets elected in the primary could leave them up all the way through to be done, so. Anything else for the good of the order?
Mr. Mayor, for the good of the order, if there's no other city business, I'm going to be adjourned this week.
All right, before we leave on here, to mention that, uh, Eric Sullivan's been in hospital forever.
He's in a, he's in a step down unit now, and he does have access to a phone, so he can talk to his wife, so that's.
We all found him.